But we do have a quorum. So, a planning update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few announcements. Just to bring your attention to some community meetings, there was one noted on your planning update in the packet, and that one is for a special use for a wireless telecommunication tower at Hazelwild Farm in the Cortlandt Voting District. There will be balloon tests on Monday, April 20th, and Tuesday, April 21st, with an inclement weather date of Wednesday, April 22nd. The meeting itself is Thursday, April 22nd, at 7:00 PM in the Harrison Road Community Center. We received notice of another balloon fly for the catlet lumber special use permit that's in process that you'll note is scheduled for May 6th for a public hearing. They're going to do another balloon fly on Thursday, April 23rd, from 9:00 until 11:00 in the morning. And then, at your places, we just received notice of a community meeting for a special use permit amendment related to the United Parcel Service, Package Delivery Service that's off of Lansdowne Road on Shannon Drive. They have some conditions on their current special use permit, or it was actually a conditional use permit back in the day that they got it, related to truck traffic on Lansdowne Road, and so they are seeking to amend that. The community meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 30th, at 7:00 PM at the Rappahannock United Way at 3310 Shannon Drive. So that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. Next item is the-
Mr. Stewart, may I ask Wanda something?
You may.
Please. Ms. Parrish?
Yes.
I would like a copy of the conditional use permit on this already.
Okay.
And I would like also a statement from the UPS because some of them are using mine road already. And I'd like to know what percentage is using that when we have the meeting at the present time, because a lot of people now cannot get out of their driveways. And however, if they increase more, then, no. I mean, yeah, now, I don't know what I would do, what I would say, we've got a community meeting, but these are questions that I would like for them to be prepared to answer.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well, then, we'll proceed to the minutes of the meeting of April 1. Everyone should have had a chance to review them. Were there any corrections or changes? Seeing none, then the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as submitted. Motion's made and seconded.
Second.
And seeing no debate, we'll proceed to a vote. They are approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Is there unfinished business? The next item on the agenda is the one you've all been waiting for. It's the continuation of the review of the, and approval of the preliminary plat for Avalon Woods. A lot of people, this has certainly been a contentious issue, and a lot of people have given a lot of effort and raised a great deal of concerns, very many of them, certainly all of them, legitimate by unanimous agreement within the commission. We had agreed four weeks ago, I guess it was, to postpone the vote until this evening. The applicant in ongoing conversations has suggested that there might be an opportunity to talk a little bit more about this to be able to nail down specific requirements that the commission has already identified to them in various channels, and certainly through the media. There is a uniform, unanimous, rather, consensus among the commission that we share the concerns of the people who live in the affected neighborhoods to the north. And we have a willingness today to take a vote, and that vote would be unanimous, to reject the plat as it was submitted. Now, if we do that, then the county is open up to, because of a lot of legal factors, to litigation that would possibly drag on for a long time, and it wouldn't give any sense of closure to the people who live in the affected communities. And so, we wish to continue it one more time to the last legal date, which would be April 27th. And on the 27th of April, I believe that we will come back with a plat that will have an entrance to Avalon Woods on Harrison Road. If there is not an entrance on Harrison Road, I believe that the commission at that time will vote to reject the plat, or an amended plat, and it will be a unanimous rejection. And with that rejection will come an explanation. And I want to share with some of you this evening some of the points of that explanation that we will make, which will ultimately potentially be the kind of evidence that a court would proceed to do. Because by right, the applicant has the right to build these 98 homes that they want to build on that property. That right was granted to them some nearly 30 years ago, when the property was rezoned. A moment ago, we learned about how UPS's business has changed over the time since they occupied that property two decades ago. The reality is, the communities of Waverly Village and that whole surrounding area certainly has changed. And now, there are more than 700 homes there, and back when those homes were built, our position is going to be that the number of residents and the number of trips through those neighborhoods during the 80s and 90s were a lot less than they are today. Because today, there are certainly more families where everybody in the family has a job, mom, dad, the teenagers now. And where 30 years ago, it was not uncommon to have a single wage earner in a home, that wage earner might go to work and come home, and there might be a couple times a week where other members of the family might come and go. Today, there's not uncommon to have three wage earners, or even four, in a home. And also, over the years, the character of that neighborhood has changed drastically. And under certain interpretations of the law, which is not entirely clear, and it's not entirely on either side, but if we do have to go to court, I believe we will be effective in arguing that the change in the character of the neighborhood and of the community in general, of our culture and even our economy, has made it different. In that the county's argument would be that we have the right to block their access through the Sawgrass proposed connection. Today, there are no doubt two to three times the traffic in that community than was probably anticipated. Today, there are certainly more people who live in that community who are tenants, who, you know, it's, they're trying to make a living. Their bunch of people have two jobs, some probably have three. So people are coming and going, and they certainly have the right to the enjoyment of their existing property. The people, so the commission is in a tough position, but not the same position that the court is in, of having to balance the property rights of the 700-plus homeowners of the associations that are affected north of the proposal, as well as the property rights of the owner of this property. We have the utmost respect for both property rights. But when the property rights of one infringe upon another, it is the commission's obligation to at least comment. Now, can we stop this? We cannot, nor can the Board of Supervisors, as you've no doubt learned. But we can make a good faith effort, and one of the things that I would like to ask my fellow commissioners to do is to grant us a delay of this vote until April 27th. And I would like to entertain a motion that would postpone it to April 27th, as well as advertise and do the appropriate legal things so that the commission can conduct business on the 27th. I would like to, if there's a motion in that regard, that would be appropriate.
Mr. Stewart, just to make sure I'm clear on your motion, and it's to establish a special meeting of the Planning Commission on the 27th, and also to continue this matter to that special meeting on the 27th.
That's correct.
Those two actions taken together in this motion, okay?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may, of course.
I'd like to remind everyone that this is to allow the applicant an opportunity to come up with a solution with an entrance to Harrison Road and not Sawgrass. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And you know, the, is there such a motion? Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does anyone else care to comment? Very well, then, we can proceed to a vote. A vote in favor of the motion postpones the vote until April 27th at a special meeting. And this vote also creates the special meeting. It is unanimous, and I thank my fellow commissioners for giving us this additional time. I thank the staff and the council for their advice. As for the applicant, if you want to, I don't think there's any reason to talk further about this, we can work it out next week. And as far as the public goes, there will be an open public hearing, or open public comment in several minutes after we conduct other business. But again, I, we hear your concerns, we are working very hard on them. And if you don't want to stay for the exciting remainder of our meeting, you won't hurt anyone's feelings. But other than that, then, we will proceed to the next item of our agenda, which is our annual report.
Will everybody back on the 27th, please?
Yes.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I'll quickly run through the annual report for 2014. It follows a similar format to each of the other years that we have presented. Beginning with the first page, there is a summary here of the items that were reviewed by the Planning Commission in 2014. Those included the rezoning, special use code amendments, work sessions, we had quite a few work sessions related to the zoning ordinance update, preliminary plat applications, as well as I included information related to the proffer advisory committee, and the time that they spent as well. I included, as has been requested in the past, information on the attendance of the Planning Commission. For the county population growth, I took a little bit different approach this year. In the past, we had been basing it primarily on building permits associated with single-family homes, and I felt like we were missing some populations there with the apartments and assisted living facilities that we've been seeing recently. So what I did was instead use the actual census estimates that come out for July of each year. So what you see here is, beginning with the actual 2010 census number of 122,397, and then from that point forward, I used the July estimates that came out each year, and the July estimate for 2014 just came out a couple of months ago, and at 129,188. These numbers were actually adjusted, the July 2013 estimate was lower when that came out, and when they came out in 2014, each of these numbers was bumped up a little bit. And so what I did for the July 2015 projection, I did use the building permits that have been polled and finalized since July 1st of 2014, or ones that are still in process that could be completed prior to July 1st of 2015. So I cut that off in February. And there were no apartments final during this time period, and there are several apartment complexes under construction now, but I think they'll probably start to be occupied after July, based on where they are in the process.
You know, I have a comment in relation to that graph.
Yes.
The, it's obviously accurate, but I believe it's somewhat misleading because it looks like the growth is really substantial, because you've left off everybody below, the period of below 118,000. And I know we certainly want to have limited, we don't want to crowd the pages of your report, but to look at that, it appears that it has doubled since 2010, because the height of 2010 is half of what 2015 is.
Yes.
And I think that to a lot of the public who just glances at these things quickly, they might jump to an inaccurate conclusion.
Yes, I could adjust that so that it begins at zero and climbs from there, if that would be preferable.
I think that would be just to, for the public.
Sure, I can do that.
It's certainly honest and accurate, but I think it's more-
Yes.
Correct. And before we go too much further, back on the part about the proffer review committee.
Yes.
Would you mind acknowledging the participation of the members at the point where you talk about it?
Okay.
The volunteers in the community certainly contributed a great deal of time and effort to-
Would you like me to list names? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
May I ask a question to Wanda, please? Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
On the annual growth rate, you got 1.35, 1.05. Now, so we have, that's, you always hear me say this, because it happened when I was on the board, I guess, is why I look at this. Now, so therefore, we have not reached, in any of these years, the 2% growth rate.
Correct, correct.
That's what I want to know, because when we were having all of that growth, remember, John? And we sat, you know, 2% growth rate. And even though we get accused of what, how much growth we've gotten, whatever, it shows here that we have not reached that 2% growth rate. Now, is this taken with the rezonings that we've done into consideration, or is this just what's there now?
No. This is what's existing through July of 2014, using the actual census estimates, and then 2015 is my projection based on building permits that have been polled or finalized. So these are actually houses that are under construction right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've looked at the population distribution each year, and we were seeing a trend starting, I believe it was last year, towards more of the housing construction being within the primary development boundary. This year, it actually appears to have gone down when you simply look at the breakout of the primary development boundary versus the rural area. In 2013, it was 58.4% of the construction of housing was occurring in the primary development boundary. When I do the numbers now, it drops to 52.8%. But one of the anomalies that I did see in there is that there's a lot of construction happening in Fawn Lake, which is actually on water and sewer. So once I factor that construction in, that's 46 homes that have been built, it bumps up to 58.6, so there actually would be a slight increase since last year in the construction occurring within the primary development boundary, which is a positive trend. This chart I have not updated yet. This requires the land book to be closed out, and that's closed out after the budget is adopted, so I expect to have this number within the next week, certainly before the 27th, actually. So I was just going to report on this number, because it's a straightforward reporting to you, once I have that number. But this is the 70, I mean, excuse me, yes, the 70/30 mix of residential to commercial industrial goal. And when we last calculated it, we were at 80% residential. In terms of the work priorities, we still do need to finalize the proffer policy guidelines. We'd like to get back before the Board of Supervisors. Now that I have the July 1st, 2014, population estimate from the census, I've actually gone back and adjusted the methodology to include that, and as a result of the population increasing, there were a few categories of proffer, of capital facilities that actually decreased in the dollar amount as a result of having a larger population. And, but now that the budget is adopted, we'll go back and also make any adjustments related to that before it goes back to the Board of Supervisors. So there could be some minor changes in the bottom line number. The biggest one would be in the transportation category, because that was based on the capital improvements plan. But the timing of this is all very nice, that the Board would be adopting a proffer policy that is very current. It would be on numbers that were just adopted in April.
Chairman, are you going to address with the Board, I brought this up to you before, so I don't know, how are we going to handle the weighing in of the economic impact?
I did bring that up when I held the report a couple months ago now, I guess it was. I did bring that up as an item for discussion. A couple of people responded to it, but I didn't get a real good feel from the Board which way they were going to go. So that will be bundled in with the proffer guidelines, though, when we do go back to them. I don't have a date, though, for that yet.
Okay. What I'm concerned with is that if we have future cases, that has to be decided by the Board, that, in my opinion, because otherwise, we're going to be right back to where we've been for all the previous years. Do you agree with that?
I agree, yes.
And I've had opportunity to talk to a couple of members of the Board, rather, and on purely residential developments, that the factor is in there, the, for economic development, because we're giving the credit on the non-debt, the debt portions, so that there wouldn't be, if it's a purely economic, I'm sorry, a purely residential development, that there wouldn't be consideration given for economic impact, because that's already been weighed into the total process, as I recall from our conversations.
The debt service credit.
Yes, okay. Among other things, the debt service, as well as the broader issues, which is why the final calculation that is proposed is less than what the previous policy was.
So my concern would then be with those that have any percentage component, even be it 1% of a commercial or office or whatever, industrial, whatever, how do we handle that? And I don't want to continue to abstain the vote, because that's actually, to me, that's part of the proffer guidelines, because it's always injected into the argument. So I think the Board needs to sit and give us a decision on that, so we have a, we have a single policy. And I'm not sure if you and the attorney agree, but I'm definitely agreeing on that, so.
Well, I will certainly be sure that is part of the question that we're asking the Board when we go back with the proffer policy. The other major initiatives I included in here, the subdivision ordinance update, that's actually currently at the county attorney's office under review. We're working through a series of zoning ordinance updates, and then developing the enhanced reporting, the, this was an item that was in the conference of plan, and the Planning Commission, and actually, some Board members have expressed interest in knowing what actually happens with these projects, you know, five, 10 years into the future. What kind of demographics do we have in them, what kind of traffic impacts are coming out of it, what are the values of the homes versus, or the commercial versus what was projected in the fiscal impact analysis. So I'm starting to pull some of this together. I've got all of the projects from about the last four or five years that have been approved. I've got them all in spreadsheet, and as they start to move forward, I'm starting to enter some of the data, so that hopefully, within the next six months, I will be able to have at least a template report for you. It will not be a complete report on any one project, because none of them are going to be far enough along at that point to be able to do that, but at least you can see the direction that we're heading. And then, we're continuing to implement electronic review and look at all of our processes. The Building Department recently implemented electronic review. We've had electronic review of site plans for probably a year and a half to two years now, and it's working very successfully. It really cuts down on the cost for the development community, they don't have to print off all these paper copies, they just bring us a disk with PDFs on it, and we can actually approve the plans electronically and then provide them with a disk back with a electronic signature on it. So we're continuing to look at moving that forward to plats and other applications besides the site plan process. So that concludes my report. If there's anything additional that the Planning Commission would like to see in here, we can go ahead and add that, and I can bring it back for a final approval, either on the 27th or the first meeting of May.
Wanda, to put all of this on a disk, is that going to be an extra cost for initial startup, from IT, or anything, or is it just going to happen?
We've already got that all in place.
And you've got that on the budget?
Yes.
The budget's not mine, but-
Yes, we, it's all in place now. We've taken care of it, so that we're able to handle the electronic reviews, and it's working well.
And I thought it would work well. The cost is what I was questioning. I mean, has there been an initial cost, and is there going to be an extra cost for this?
Um, there was an initial cost, I couldn't tell you what it was off the top of my head.
But the Board approved that?
Yes, yes. We had to upgrade to Adobe Acrobat Pro, and so that we can have all the abilities to include electronic stamps and that type of thing on the plans. And we upgraded to dual monitors, that we can have dual monitors while we're reviewing and commenting on one monitor, writing on one monitor our comments while we're reviewing the plan on the other monitor. So there was an initial cost, but there is not a long-term cost or an ongoing cost associated with it. It was that initial output.
Output, okay.
In long term, there'll be savings.
Well, yes, because we're not having to scan. It takes a lot of time when we would get all the paper copies of everything, we would have to scan all of that. Now we just save it, and so we're saving time there. If there's nothing else, we can move on.
Onto our work session on the zoning update related to overlay districts. The silence you heard was an overwhelming approval of the report as submitted. Thank you.
You've got electronic.
It was a digital approval.
It's all draft work. Good evening, floor computer, please. I'm happy to say that we are now officially through with all the specific zoning districts, now that we took through commercial office and industrial districts through last meeting. So tonight's meeting is focused on the overlay districts, namely, the dam break inundation zones, which is actually a new, some new language proposed to be added to the zoning ordinance, the historic overlay district, as well as the highway car overlay district. I'd like to start this evening with the dam break inundation zones and give a little bit of background on what that basically is. Similar, the county has things like floodplain overlays, where in major flooding events, rivers overflow, and there are areas that are potentially subject to massive flooding issues, 100-year flood type of events. And we do have an overlay district pertaining to that to protect life and property. Dam break inundation zones is a fairly new requirement that came through the Code of Virginia to try to protect property owners within, frankly, the outfall of a dam, a large dam structure within the county or all throughout the state, should it fail. So what we propose is, in addition, would be Division 2A to the zoning ordinance to address the Code of Virginia requirements pertaining to dam break inundation zones. The draft ordinance simply references the appropriate Code of Virginia requirements, we're not adding to it, and it references those requirements to be followed as part of the county's development review process in instances where development is proposed within the boundaries of mapped dam break inundation zones. In your staff report, I had mentioned the fact that there are many instances where, you know, I had mentioned the flood zones prior. The areas in blue are basically flood zone areas. If there's large flooding events and creeks overflow, these blue areas are areas subject to flood. to flood. So if you're in such lowland areas, you know, your structure could potentially come underwater or your agricultural field. Generally speaking, as I had noted in the staff report, dam break inundation zones are fairly consistent with these exact same areas. So in many instances, there's not really going to be a big impact, because the flood zone already protects from development within those areas. But there are areas down in the Lake Anna District, for instance, where you do see these red, the red areas are the dam break inundation zones that have been mapped, and then the blue areas, like I said, are the flood zones. There are slight deviations that do occur from dam breaks. Interestingly enough, some of the dam areas within the county, such as the Nye Reservoir and Fawn Lake, have fairly significant dam break inundation zones that actually follow all the way out into Caroline County. So they're fairly significant should a dam fail. Lake Anna also has one, there's one affiliated with Keaton Run out in the Orange County area, and Hunting Run Reservoir drains up to the Rappahannock, as well as the Mox Run. And those are pretty well confined within the river easement there. So just to get down to the requirements associated with the dam break inundation zones, there is a query to be conducted with preliminary plat or as plan review if no preliminary plat review has been conducted. The query done, conducted by staff when we receive an application identifies if development as defined by the Virginia Code is within a mapped dam break inundation area, and if so, within 10 days of application receipt, the Department of Conservation and Recreation is to be requested to make a determination of potential impacts of a proposed spillway flood standards required of the dam. The dam owner is also to be notified of development within the inundation zone. And like I said, development is defined by the Code of Virginia. I have provided that within your packets. I actually gave all the language, and even the reference language as well, within the Virginia Code for reference on that.
So when the dam owner is notified, is there some expectation that there are procedures that they should, that they're expected to take as a result of this notification?
That's correct. Ultimately, and let me see if I can find it. I don't know if County Attorney has any input on this as well. Let me just see if I can find some language for you.
We can talk about that offline. We don't have to discuss that tonight. I just would be interested.
I would say that in my reading of this, it's actually raised a number of questions for myself from interpretation standpoint. And this week, I have solicited feedback from the Department of Conservation and Recreation on the limits, frankly, every level of development, whether this is also applicable to rezonings, because frankly, if I'm considering rezoning application in generalized development plan, I may want to know prior that they're going to plat, that they're within dam break inundation zone. So there are some other questions that I am working out, and I would be happy to get back with you on that. No problem. Okay. Just to move on, then, dam break inundation, let's see, here we go. Department of Conservation and Recreation is then giving a 45-day window upon receipt of the request to provide comment. And if no comment results, it basically is returned typical business and typical review for, on the county side. However, if DCR does determine that the development would change the spillway flood standards, the locality shall not permit development as defined by the Virginia Code or redevelopment unless plans are altered or payments are made to mitigate impacts. And those details are laid out, again, in the Virginia Code. Again, right now, we are in the drafting stages of this, and I am waiting a little bit more clarity on this, so I can have more details for everyone at this time.
Especially on the issue of payments.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What the state code says related to the payments is that contribute payment to the necessary upgrades to the affected impounding structure. So they would be actual payments towards changing that dam so that it could...
Some higher standard.
Yes. So the development could occur and not be affected by the...
Moving on, in reference to the historic overlay district, really, what we did was, we acknowledged the fact that it exists within the zoning ordinance, and we've looked to try to put that more in line with the comprehensive plan. Staff has removed a reference that included providing incentives for upkeep and rehabilitation of older structures as a purpose or function of the historic overlay district. That is not something that's been employed, I don't believe, and Wanda, you may be able to correct me, but I don't believe there have actually been incentives offered in that instance. So instead, recognizing that it hasn't happened, and the comprehensive plan historic resources element doesn't really support it, we've changed that, provide incentive to encouraging rehabilitation of older structures, so the incentives is no longer in there. We've also redirected the historic overlay district review processes in coordination with the Historic Preservation Commission to the Planning Director instead of the Zoning Administrator. The Planning Director and Planning Office historically been the contact person with the Historic Preservation Commission coordinating with them. Planning Office also keeps track of, and inventories, documented historic resources within the county. When we do plan review, if there's historic structures, archaeological resources, we're typically the group that's looking and checking those type of records. So Planning Director was more appropriate reference in that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've got a question. This historic overlay, the people that fall in this overlay, do they have a voice in where they want to be in that or not? How does that process work? Or do you just find some historical stuff somewhere and just impose it upon the land?
I believe the comp plan basically limited the current districts. I mean, it would, essentially, if you live in a district, you know it, and you voluntarily, if you're moving into it, you're voluntarily doing so.
Right. The historic overlay districts haven't changed, except in the case where a property owner has come to the county and said, "I'd like to be included." So they haven't changed in many, many years since they were established. But if a new historic overlay district was proposed, it is a zoning ordinance amendment, so it would have to go through public hearing processes before it was approved.
It would come to us?
It would come to you. It would go to the Historic Preservation Commission, then the Planning Commission, and then the Board of Supervisors. There would be that one extra step in there.
Thank you.
Lastly, within the highway corridor overlay district, we've seen this in a lot of our other districts through when we've been reviewing. We found that the purpose and intent, and we hope you would agree, was, it didn't say, it said a lot of stuff, but it didn't really say anything. There was a lot of bulleted points in there that really weren't enforceable from a code standpoint, didn't really offer much additional input. So we've proposed striking that altogether. In the past, as I had noted in the staff report, we had removed the special use requirements, the extra special uses within the highway corridor. It has been leaned out somewhat over the years, and we felt that this was the next step within that section. And then frankly, that wraps up the work session for today with the overlay districts. I would propose in future meetings, we bring forward things, more amenity-based things, our signage ordinance, outdoor lighting, off-street parking requirements, things of that nature. And then we'll eventually transition into our individual processes for special use permits and rezonings. Those processes, those review processes are laid out in the zoning ordinance, and we'll be getting to that shortly. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
I thought sometime last year, in the near future, that we just went over the signage and lighting and all of this. What are we going to do now?
There have been a number of instances over the year, well, as a matter of fact...
No, not over the years, because we just did this.
No, I agree with that. I just know that, for instance, with the signage ordinance, it's been a lot of tinkering for an awful lot of time on specific elements. This review gives us the opportunity to go through the entire signage ordinance as one large piece and try to break that down and make sure that everything works together. We have a number of, we've been working on some things to try to, you know, things as simple as an A-frame sign right now, to put it out in front of your business. That right now...
I thought we had that. Excuse me, but I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I had to. I thought we already decided that.
The A-frame signage was language that had been proposed as part of the signage committee, and that happened about five years ago. But unfortunately, those specific amendments were held up and ultimately denied, so they didn't end up being incorporated due to some other issues that had happened at the time. We've done a number of recent amendments to signage ordinance dealing with digital signs. That's been the most recent update.
How, with the business owners, are you collecting information from them and see what they would like to have? You know, time's a-titled here.
Absolutely.
And I certainly want to be business-friendly.
Yep.
And not set things back, you know, so that people have to go through a struggle, or either have to come in and get a permit, you know, to be allowed to do this and allowed to do that. That's just not business-friendly. And I certainly would like to have comment back from commercial owners on what they would like, because I just thought we'd been through this.
There's also the cost of enforcement. The more rules you have...
Absolutely.
And the fact that the county is not open anywhere near the number of hours that businesses are open. So what's happening is, it's happening on holidays and weekends and evenings and early mornings when the county's not open, and then we've just made a worthless ordinance. Or we say we need more enforcement people and stuff like that, so we add to the cost of government to enforce a law that may not actually be providing a benefit.
What I can...
And then we say...
Like a sandwich board.
Right.
I mean, why do we want to create a whole bureaucracy on sandwich boards?
It's simply, what our draft is, is not a regulatory draft. We're proposing to add those type of things, so they are permitted, exempted type of signs. Everything that we've done, that you'll be seeing shortly, actually expands allowable signage area. Like I said, we have had a number of signage ordinance amendments that have been going back a number of years and recently updated with the digital signage ordinance, where we reduced the, the, the county had set a 10-second interval, and it was reduced down to four seconds.
Yeah, we did that.
That happened a few months ago, that's correct.
And then we also did, you're talking too fast for me to talk, but I'm sorry. And we also, if you remember, all of you, I'm sure, that we also spoke about the neon signs inside the window. They could be inside, but they couldn't be outside. And, I mean, it's just, sometimes I think that we create work for ourselves, you know? I mean, we do this, these things, but have we had complaints? I would like to know if we've had complaints about signs. I would like to know why we're doing this. You know, sometimes we just come up and say, "Oh, we're going to do this." Well, my question is, why are we doing this?
Well, going back to the comp plan adoption, what, almost two years ago now, we said we would do this, and a number of items that were identified, for example, this brand-new business about the dam inundation, the proposal that's being considered, one of the things I like about it, and I like about most of this work that you're doing, is the fact that now, instead of saying that our ordinances repeat what the state code says, because the code can change, we would now say that pursuant to Virginia statute blah, 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 they must comply, and then if they change that statute, then we don't have to change the ordinance. And I believe that the staff is approaching these reviews with a great deal of common sense, and I think it's better to approach them more thoughtfully and strategically, top to bottom, rather than putting Band-Aids on any one little part that comes up. So I think this is good. We're not rushing into it.
You're right, on the dam. And I certainly, because that state, you're going to, you have to deal with environmental issues and everything, you know, on that part of it. But when it comes to signs and what allowed, like a sandwich board sign or whatever, I want to know when we updated this, and what policies did we, whatever, did we sign off on?
Well, all those are new since, I've been here three and a half, almost three and a half years, and none of those are during my term, so they go back.
I've got Alzheimer's in.
You don't have Alzheimer's. You're just...
I can remember that we did this.
It was five years ago.
But I can remember that we did this.
Well, and I'm sure we have in the past, but by doing it in the fashion that it's being conducted now, I believe the end result is that it will be a lot longer period before we have to deal with it, because, for example, on the digital signage, that reflected a technology advancement that couldn't have been anticipated five years ago, probably. And now, I think that the, I really like the fact that the staff is making these things so much easier to understand and make...
I don't mind them to make it understand. That's great. But however, I don't want us to come across to the community, business community out here, that we're noted for changing everything. I want to make it much easier for them, much simpler for them, and that's why I want to see what's in place at this time.
And the staff has definitely heard that, and if you really delve down, and we haven't asked for any specific details, but I believe if you delve down, you will find that the drafts and the work that's being done are fulfilling the general direction and vision that this commission has, related to less regulation and more clarity.
Absolutely. And I want to know, when was the last time that we reviewed these? And what we did, and what was that?
To my knowledge, it has never, since I've been here in 2006, 2007, we've never comprehensively reviewed the signage ordinance, other than the work that came out of the signage committee back in 2009 approximately. But like I said, many of those amendments that were drafted were actually ultimately rejected following the initiation. So they didn't end up in the code. They didn't end up in there. But I think there was some good work in there that, you know, some of those elements we may want to bring back. You know, frankly, we don't see any reason why you can't have a sandwich board sign, but currently, the code doesn't, doesn't speak to it, so we're saying...
Thought we approved it. But anyway, that's okay. All right. Just bring back to me.
Absolutely.
What we approved.
Okay.
And so that I can see it, and when it happened, and what we did, okay? Before you go into, because I, when you sit up there and you tell me it's like this, and like this, like this, I've got to have something to compare it by. And I'm sorry, but I can be the kid.
We'll go back and pull all the signage-related cases.
Please. And also the signage, and also the neon signs that are in the doors. One time, we compared it with the city of Fertisburg, and we said, "Well, in the city of Fertisburg historic area, they have, you know, lights that go around the windows, and, you know, some neon, open or closed, you know, in the windows." I need those things. I want to see those things.
Understood. Yeah, we'll be bringing that forward. The other thing, I just...
I just wanted to clarify that I believe it would be the sense of the commission that you are encouraged to provide direct communication, and I don't know that you need to bring this detail back to the entire commission unless Mrs. Carter has a specific ongoing concern about it.
Ms. Carter has one.
Well, and I'm sure you'll be able to work it out with them, and then we support your...
But I just want it.
We support whatever you...
I'm interested in the digital information.
Digital signs? Sure. And actually, that's a good segue. I did want to just bring up, as part of the signage ordinance, I know when we had amended the intervals from 10 to seconds to four seconds, there had been other discussions throughout that public hearing with some of the citizens and the Planning Commission as well, about addressing the transitions, because there were concerns about, you know, you'd have stagnant images, and then there'd be all kinds of motion as they transitioned. And that was fairly controversial at the time, and staff was directed to go look at that and try to make, try to get rid of the motion, so it was more of a static image to a static image. And we'll be looking to address that issue as well, as part of this ordinance.
That's right, because I do not want to see doors closed. I want them open, and their signs be very protective, and that people can know they're open.
Okay, yep. That's all I have.
I think Mr. Paul can...
But, well, and I think '09, we sit here probably for about six months and discuss these signs and everything else. So what you're telling us is that everything was denied, it wasn't approved, on all the information we went through?
That's correct.
By whom? It was denied by us?
The Board.
The Board of Supervisors.
I believe it actually did occur at the Planning Commission level at the time. I'd have to pull the minutes from that, but it ended up being, I believe there were certain issues with the ordinance that the whole ordinance ended up being denied, rather than amended. But that's what I can recall from it.
Hold me back, okay?
Absolutely. I'll pull the minutes for all... Absolutely, I'll pull the minutes for all that.
Absolutely.
Don't think there are any other questions. Again, I think that you are, by just eliminating redundant and repetitive material, I think you're doing the public a wonderful service. So thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. Being known new business, now is the time for public comment, in general, if the public wished to make any comment. You know the three-minute guideline, so I won't go over it.
They'll all take three minutes.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, thanks. My name is Jennifer Brown, and I'm the president of the Waverly Civic Association, representing the four different neighborhoods that are affected by the Avalon Platte, and I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of everybody for taking the time to really go through this issue. I know it doesn't necessarily affect your specific districts for each one of you, but I'm glad that you guys can see the bigger picture and care, even though it's not necessarily your specific voting right or your constituents. So thank you very much for caring about our safety of our residents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well, then the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. Let's proceed to a vote. It is unanimous, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.